One minute after five, it's time to get started and according to our agenda, number one is invocation, let's take a moment of silence and reflection, please. Okay, thank you very much, and we'll officially call the meeting to order, welcome everyone. And those of you that may not have ever been to one of our meetings, I would call your attention to the table, to my left rear, which has got all the supporting documents, including an agenda for us tonight, and I would also ask that you raise your hand if you cannot hear or understand what's being said, and we'll try to speak louder and clear, and those of you that are listening by electronic means, thank you for being with us as well. Let's turn to number three on our agenda, which is pledge of allegiance, and my flag to the right.
I pledge allegiance to the law of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Number four, and the agenda's consideration of approving the agenda as presented, Mr. Hewitt, I understand you have the need of possible some changes?
Yes, sir, due to some schedule changes, I'd ask that items seven and eight be flipped in order, and for an addition numbered as item thirteen A and named Water Resources Development Grant Resolution 2309.
Looking for a motion to approve the agenda as amended?
I'd like to make a motion to approve the agenda as amended, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, we have Judge Second in discussion, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed say no, unanimously approved, Madam Clerk. And let's look at the next item on the agenda, number five, consideration of minutes for March thirteenth, March fourteenth, March twenty-seventh. Is there any motion?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve the minutes of our special meeting on March thirteenth, our regular meeting on March fourteenth, and the special meeting on March twenty-seventh.
Is there a second? Second discussion, hearing none, all in favor say aye. Opposed say no, unanimously approved. We have approved all three sets of the minutes. Public comments, number six, which we're required to sign up for to speak on an item that is on the agenda, later on in the meeting, we'll have an opportunity for all of you to speak about anything you want, but we have one person that has signed up to speak on agenda items, and Mr. Brent Shaver, if you will, come to the microphone, give us your name and address, and talk to us about bathrooms.
Good morning. What my, Brent Shaver, one twenty-one, Tarpon, and a comment is a request, when you get to item number fifteen, talking about the trailer bathroom, you could give us some kind of idea of what kind of events or date you envision that being used at, how permanent they would be, like, do you see those things being put someplace for two days or three months? If you can just include some of that information in discussion, I appreciate it.
Thank you very much. Did I miss anybody that had signed up? All right, we'll go to what was, number eight, we're gonna go to that, which is discussion of possible action, stormwater, Mr. Clemmons.
Good evening. At the board meeting, the board selected McGill and Associates for Stormwater Management Plan for Social Services. McGill and Associates has provided us with an agreement with an amount of $131,200. Staff recommends approval of agreement.
Any questions from the commissioners, comments?
I've got a couple, I think David helped me with some of them earlier in the week, but there was only three, really three locations that were specified on that study, but it'll be islandwide.
Yeah, it's islandwide, Rick knows there are three major concerns that have been plagued for years, and I wanted to try to come up with a solution there first.
Okay, I just wanted, the way the contract read, I thought it was just for those three specific areas, which is the east end, the three hundred block, and then the far west end, there where the west end lake is, when it rains.
Well, it's coming up with a master plan islandwide.
Okay.
So I just brought those two, I'm gonna clean.
There's a definite problem.
All right, then I'll make a motion that we approve the agreement with McGill for the stormwater management services.
Second. Okay, any more discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed say no, unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Clemmons. All right, now what was number seven, we're gonna ask Mr. Clemmons to address roadway work.
Yeah, I just want to keep on hitting that.
You're not getting away yet.
Well, I better get that off the plate one time anyway. As the mayor pointed out to this, in reference to award the contract for roadway work, Wright Angler Engineering listed bids for roadway work tied to each drive, Point West Drive and Ranger Street. One bid received from Highland Paving, an amount of $126,000, that done work for town in the past, and Wright Angler Engineering recommends town road contract to Highland Paving.
All right, commissioners, comments, questions?
Again, Chris, I did a little bit of talking, because you were busy, so I talked with David, and the way it was explained to me, that we are, we have a list of road priorities that was set up several years ago by North Carolina State University, and they told us what roads needed to be done in what order, and we're basically following that schedule so we can pave a little bit of our town roads each year.
Yeah, that's correct, we've actually been trying to, I think we've had that planning place about ten years, so just thinking of mine, and we've talked about a pretty good many of them, but also, in this year's budget, I'm asking to revisit that right there, to kind of look at everything and make sure we're still arriving in priority, but changing every time, but yeah, that's correct.
Yeah, maybe we can solicit the state of North Carolina University to, or UNC State University to help us with that again, well, that'd be...
Yeah. Anybody else, questions, comments?
I'll make a motion to award the contract to Highland Paving.
Judge Second.
Who made the second?
Judge.
Judge. All right, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed say no.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chris.
Thank you, sir. Chief Dixon, please report number nine on the agenda. Thank you for all you and your department do, sir. And you too, Mr. Clemmons.
Glad to do it, thank you. So, please report, this month, the biggest thing in the numbers that we noticed was the increase, and this is from March, we haven't gone through April, obviously, the increase in parking violations and complaints that we had, and you'll see, seeing that, there was about three pages of warnings and citations that were written just for parking, so we noticed a huge uptick in that in March, and just want to remind everyone that paid parking started April first, so that's a completely separate, none of these violations were paid parking violations, they were just people parking in the right of way, or, we also saw a lot of people parking in the travel lane, and make sure if you're parking, you get all four tires off of the roadway. That's kind of the biggest thing from the numbers, and I'll just give a couple of public service announcements for other things that we got going on. March nineteenth, this is just past, to kind of give you update, we did a Girl Scout bike rodeo with the Girl Scouts, that was a really cool event, really enjoyed that, they came out over at the gazebo, and did some bicycle safety stuff, taught them some hand signals, did things like that, they actually had helmets that were donated to them, and so all the Girl Scouts got a free bicycle helmet, they got to decorate them, they had decoration stations set up there, so it was a really cool event, and we were glad we got to participate with that, and the Girl Scouts, you know, doing good things, so. Let's see here, I want to mention to y'all that we are down an officer right now, not gonna say much more than that, I don't, he's gonna be out for a long term, so that's kind of things we've got going on now, we are in the process of hiring a new officer, we've been in the hunt for a long time, and we've got one that we're very far in the process with, we've actually submitted everything to the state, so they hold all of our certifications, criminal justice training standards, so we've submitted to them, as soon as we get the paperwork back, then we'll be able to swear him in and get him working and get him through field training, so.
Good job, Jim.
That's a good note for us, we're working on that. Remind everyone that Days at the Docks is April the twenty-ninth and thirtieth, so that's not this coming weekend, but weekend after, is that correct? Yeah, it's coming up on us quick, so, and then my last public service announcement, I'm gonna make these for the rest of the summer, low speed vehicles, we're starting to see them more on the road, they are just that, they are a motor vehicle, so, they're low speed vehicle, you have to follow all traffic laws, seat belts, driver's license, kids can't drive them, the whole nine yards, that's all I've got on the police report, if you got questions, comments, or concerns, I'll be glad to try to answer them for you.
Any questions, comments?
Chief Dixon, I appreciate you working with the parkers that were parking all over the island, I guess when they found out we had so many shells on the beach, they wanted to come get their share, and they would park just about anywhere they could. Thank you, appreciate your work.
Absolutely, thank y'all.
Mr. Evans, number ten on the agenda.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Like I said, every month, the report kind of speaks for itself, right now, in the last month, with active new home permits, we have thirty-six, for other active permits, the permits that are actually open, and we are working to three hundred and five of those, the permits issued for over $30,000, there's twenty-four of those this month, the substantial improvements, there's $100,000, that's four of those. We got permits that are issued that have been, are waiting to be picked up, and those are the ones that we've issued, and people have not come and gotten, there's seventeen of those, most time people come and get them right away. Total permits equal three hundred and fifty-eight. Right now, for permits in review, we actually have four, there was two, but we had, we got two that's active that we actually got through the system. Permits submitted or incomplete, there was twelve of them, those are the ones that when they come in, they don't have all the information, and we have to turn them back. Zoning permits issued, there was twenty of those for this month, the CAMA permits issued, there was ten. We serviced a hundred and twenty-five active permits, that's the ones we put our hands on, and then the total inspections that were made were five hundred and forty-seven for the month. Once again, if you'll notice that number of high dollar renovations and additions, it's an indication that we are doing well, and that people are fixing the homes. In that report, that's not, what's not listed in here, is that sometime back, we condemned the one ninety-one O B W, we issued the order, and the permit's been issued to have it removed, so we're expecting that to come down, I'm hoping pretty soon, because it's in pretty bad shape, it's a, that hazard, it's a real danger to its neighboring properties, so, if you're looking, if you want to take some pictures, now's the time to do it, because it's gonna be coming down, so, and that's the report.
Any questions?
Tim, we were, earlier this week, we had talked about the installation of some floating docks in the canals, and they are overstepping their boundary out into the waterway, making it probably, in the future, will make it difficult to navigate, especially if they put boats on the outside of them, across from each other, you might get a paddleboard through there, so you had said that you wanted me to remind you of that.
Yeah, we're going to, the planning staff is going to engage the planning board, we are going to set a pier headline, we're hoping to get a proposal together with the right language, get a consistency statement possibly out of the planning board, we'll have to, because it's in the public trust order, once we get it through the planning board stage, my intention is, because we're getting complaints about the floating docks in the canals, so that'll have to go to CAMA, CAMA will then review it, also for consistency, and once we get okay for that, it'll come back to the board with a consistency statement, and then y'all can make a decision whether y'all want to... We're going to try to use some other beaches, and CAMA's recommendation, because I've been talking to them, about establishing this pier headline from the right of way, so that it is consistent.
Tim, I appreciate your efforts on that.
And using the survey dredged canal line, that was their recommendation.
Yeah, Tim, I think that's important for the folks that live on those canals, as well as people that are gonna dredge the canals, and I appreciate your work on that, and you've also done some work on the, with the engineers on the pier and stuff, you've done a lot this month, and I, it is appreciated.
Yeah, we, I don't know if it's part of this, but we are working on getting, getting the permits for the repairs and those kinds of things, so that when y'all make the decision, we'll be ready, that's what we're looking for.
Can I go on to the next item?
Yeah, let me catch my breath. The next item is actually, we had a long conversation with the contractor this afternoon, we are struggling with trying to compete, we have a thirty percent impervious coverage area on our sites, other municipalities have, some have forty, some have thirty-five, some have forty, and some have forty-five, we require one hundred percent containment of that thirty percent on site, and we're going to, at the behest of the board, I don't want to take this unless we're wanting to, to the planning board, we will take a look at increasing that thirty percent to forty percent. There's a whole bunch of good things that can happen with that, but it also, I don't know that it would be that big a negative, because we would still require one hundred percent containment on site, it would basically be a ten percent increase, but you would just end up with a bigger area to contain, so.
And that would have to be engineered, and so...
Yeah, all of these have to be engineered, we require these, they come in with the engineer's numbers, and we review them to make sure that, you know, that they're accurate, which, you know, engineers are a lot smarter than we are, but we review them to make sure they're not very in compliance with the town, and so it'll just basically be an increase, but we've got to run it through, this is actually in the land use, so we're in the stormwater section of land use, so we have to run it through the planning board, once again, we have to get a consistency statement, once again, we have to presume as well, so there's a process that we have to...
Tim, is that something we need to approve?
Y'all need to tell me, that's not something that I'm willing to carry, because of that percentage increase, y'all need to let me know if you want me to carry that different way.
Is there a motion to allow that to go to the planning board?
I'll second that.
Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed say no. Nothing's approved, it's just to be sent forward to look at, and that's... Been here a while. All right, go ahead, Mr. Evans, on the next one.
Okay, the next one is, sometime in the past, at one of the previous board meetings, we were asked to get a list of the public facilities, and a list, to set up a scheduling for inspections, for maintenance, and observations, and to keep up with these facilities, and what they may or may not need, and we actually, actually Christie did eighty-five to ninety percent of it, and I pretty much put my stamp on the rest of it, but this is the list of facilities, we vetted it, I think there might be one or two walkways that are either mislabeled, or we kind of missed them because we were doing some stuff to them, but it's a pretty, it's a pretty good list, and a good start.
Tim, are there any, after this review of all this property, was there anything that stuck out that you thought, or stood out, I should say, that it needs some immediate attention, or will need some attention in the near future?
Well, I mean, we monitor the walkways every year, so me and Chris usually go through them every year, that's been a thing that's been going on for quite a while, there is, we do have a public facility here that we've had an engineer evaluate, and I don't know if David's gonna speak to that later or not, but there was an evaluation on that, staff agrees with the evaluation, but, and we need to take, keep an eye on it, pretty much, so.
Where's the location of the pocket store?
It's that little, it's a little park up there, it's like in the, it's like six hundred block, yeah.
You blink, you miss it.
Yeah.
I was just making sure, thank you.
Okay.
Is that it?
Anything else?
Mr. Evans, thanks for your report, sir.
Thanks, sir.
And Christie.
Mr. Murdock, number thirteen.
Hang in there, buddy.
Yeah, hang in there.
I've had some concerns about some of these facilities for a while, and one of them is the park course trail that's been a part of the beach for, I don't know, ten years or something, y'all know better than me, I noticed a year or so ago, that the tide was coming in, and the facility was actually, after some storms, it was damaged, and then every time the tide would come up and go out, we would lose another additional piece of that facility, I don't know if anybody's paying any attention, but the, some of the facilities appear to have been stolen or removed by the town, due to the fact that they've become unsafe, so this is a little bit of concern, I see people using the park course all the time, all summer long, so I don't want to see something go away that I see everybody enjoying every day, so I was bringing this to the board, to see if you guys want to do anything about it, and get some opinions, because we could do some limited, limited wooden bulkhead-ing around those, just those sections, to get them back in shape, and put them back, or improve them somehow, to be used for something else, or they're just gonna be gone, so it's, it's either do something that we don't, and I don't know why you have, we lost, well, how many did we lose?
About the seat, we took out about half of them.
So, we're down fifty percent now, they're gone, and...
Could that be relocated down to the eight hundred block until we get that area squared away, than what we're doing with it?
My thought was that we asked a few meetings ago to have that area delineated, has that been taken care of, did we do any delineation in that area?
Yeah, we've actually had, we had the David group go out, and they've mapped it all, we're waiting for the, for the Corps and other agencies to give us the okay on what we've had mapped, we've got to get the approvals from them, but we do have the map, and it appears that none of the park course is in the wetlands, and it appears that we could put a retaining wall all the way down there, and that's what we need, we don't need a bulkhead, we need a retaining wall, all the way down, but we have had it delineated, we just, we just can't, I just can't say it's a fact yet, because there's other things you have to do, but I have a map.
How much longer do you think that'll take to get that approval where we can actually start working?
When we talked to them, they said it would be, could be as much as two months, because they're real busy, everybody's real busy, so, and that's, they have to do pretty much all of them, so they got them coming from everywhere, but they've had it for a while, they've had it for, I think I've had the map for them long, so they've had it that long.
Brian, I think that's, once they get that done, putting up a retaining wall, don't call it a bulkhead, call it a retaining wall, to retain that, that area, as you say, I live on the western end, in eight hundred blocks, so I see, go by there quite often, and during the, especially during the summertime, there's always somebody in there, whether it be the kids or the adults, using that facility, the bicyclers, the joggers, they all stop by to use it, so I think it's important to keep it.
Yeah, definitely a lot of people enjoy, this is more of a public service announcement, type of thing to let you know that it's just, it's bitten off a piece of the park course area, and it will continue to do so as long as we have our hands in our pockets, so the next thing, it might be the sidewalk, and then you're gonna be at the edge of Ocean Boulevard West, so, at some point, we have to protect our investment, so to speak, just like people do their canal lots, and their marsh homes, and all that stuff, and the only way to do that, unfortunately, is with hardened structures, like a retaining wall, bulkhead, whatever you want to call it, I just hate to see these facilities go, I mean, I was the guy that laughed at it at first, the first time I saw it, and even scoffed at the idea of probably putting it in, but after seeing it, you know, there's no, you can't turn your back to the fact that it gets a lot of usage, so, and I don't know if everybody's seen that, half of them, as you say, are gone now, but they're gone, so, and that's because they're not safe to use, and that was my concern, that water coming in, you got holes in them, you got kids out there playing, and the town bears liability for that, so, I commend you for doing that, actually, and I'd like to see them get put back, or something get put back, but I'm just one guy.
Tim, as soon as you can get that information, you'll share that with us, so we can get it on the agenda, please.
Yeah, just, the word I was looking for was verified, we got to get the lines verified.
If I could interject here, that's just routine maintenance stuff, we're gonna get the, we're gonna get those back, and have it delineated, that's not an action that needs to come back to the board, you know, it's about $500 worth of four of fours and stuff, that's really the minimus, and we can, we're gonna undertake a repair effort, if we need to put some bulkheads out there, there's plenty of the right of way money that we got from parking, so that's not something that needs to come back to the board.
So that's gonna, y'all gonna get that...
We're gonna take care of it, it's called handling it.
Yeah, yeah, that's why, we've got a lot of things going on like that right now, but we're just waiting for the lines to be verified, that was the word I was looking for, we have to get them verified, we've already got the maps.
All right, Mr. Hewitt, thirteen A.
I'm gonna lateral this one over to Christie.
Good evening, you guys had this addition to your agenda packet because despite the efforts of trying to get some numbers together, we just got those numbers late last night, and putting materials together today, but the current situation in the inlet is dire, the Corps has revealed to us that it will likely take a weather event for their dredge to be able to get in and do any work, the town was forward-thinking many years back, and pursued a shallot draft inlet permit, that in case this ever happened, and the Corps fleet could not go in, that we would stand shovel-ready, so we do have an active permit that the agencies are reviewing, everything is looking promising there, and the town is coordinated with Dare County and the Oregon Inlet Task Force about the use of the Miss Katie, which was the dredge that was built for Oregon Inlet in North Carolina, and they've agreed to release that dredge for our purposes, so the purpose before you tonight is a resolution that is required by the state for us to apply for grant funding, it looks as if the estimate for the total project right now is $850,500, we would be applying for seventy-five percent of that, which would be $637,000 from the state, and then our part would be $212,625. Brunswick County has indicated that they have a willingness to participate in that local share, so in order to move forward with submitting a grant application, you guys would have to approve the attached resolution that's required by the state.
I'd like to say a couple of things about that, if I may, there's been a lot going on in the background to try to make this happen, we all are, I'm sure, aware of the charter boat captains' attempt to find help to get the inlet open for this upcoming fishing season, commercial fishermen, those of us that just love boating, and the overall safety of that inlet, and been a lot of people doing a lot of things, and this is the most realistic... of that inlet. And been a lot of people doing a lot of things, and this is the most realistic opportunity that I see us having anytime in the near future. And we've learned that the federal government, the state government, and local governments have to work together to get these things done. And different companies, different agencies, and entities, the timing is not always the same, so that makes it even more complicated to work, to work things out. I would highly encourage and pray that you commissioners, please go forward with this. It's the only thing that I see as a possibility for us having this inlet functional in a safe, near-safe way for the immediate future of this season. So please, look at this long and hard and support it. Any comments from you commissioners, questions?
I agree, it is a, it's rather tricky, because we got maybe 18 inches of water outside, so it's just about impossible unless you know, have a narrow draft boat to get out. So I'd like to make a motion that we approve Resolution 23-09, the Water Resources Development Grant.
So, the motion. Made and seconded by the judge. Any more discussion? Hearing that all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone against? Say no. It's unanimous, Madam Clerk. Thank you, Christie.
Thank you, Christie and David.
You want to talk about the ramp?
Sure. So, we applied for a grant through the Public Beach and Coastal Waterfront Access Program for a hatteras ramp and public walkway at the pier. We were approved for that grant. We found that out in the November, December timeframe. It takes the state a while to put their grant documents together and legal review, and so what we have before you tonight is our grant document contract as attachment one and the required budget amendment. The total amount of the project was estimated at $66,985, and our match for that, $16,746.
And this is for the access, hatteras ramp, access to the beach?
At the pier.
At the pier, which has become a reality now that we were fortunate to be able to procure that area, because the adjacent property, I believe, has been signed a contract. So the existing entrance to the beach will be going away. So with that said, I'd like to make a motion to approve the contract associated with the budget amendment of ordinance 23-8, which amends ordinance 22-14.
Good deal, Mr. Sussman. All right, judge made the second. More discussion? Anyone? Hearing that all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
opposed, say no. Again, unanimously approved, Madam Clerk. Turn the page.
Thank you, Chris.
Number 15, Mr. Murdoch, bathrooms.
All right. This is, again, like a, I'm bringing this forward because I have inspected some town facilities in the past few weeks, and I feel like we could do some improvement. I work from above Oak Island to roughly Sunset Beach on a daily basis, and those beaches, as far as providing a place to use facilities or a restroom, are way in front of us, big time. So I went to the pier, I do have pictures. I went to the pier Saturday, and it's disgusting. It's filthy. It's, it's, it's not, it's almost something you wouldn't even let your dog go in, so no wonder people are using people's houses and outdoor showers and such as that, because you couldn't, you just, they can't be maintained when there's 300 people out front on the beach strand. A portage on cannot be, it's just not designed to handle that type of capacity. So going into summer, when it gets 85, 90, 95 degrees out there with more and more people, we just, I don't see unless we had a pump truck sitting on site cleaning them on an hourly basis, or, you know, something of that nature, that we could keep them clean enough with toilet paper stocked up. Nobody can wash their hands. I mean, it's, it's awful. I'm glad we have a house here where you don't have to use those facilities, so, but it's, it's, in my opinion, it's not fair for the town to require the public to have to use those type of facilities. So with that being said, I went to Sunset Beach, and I talked to people at Sunset Beach. They've had that facility down there. It's a, it's a trailer, because we can't build any permanent facilities yet at the pier to have restrooms. We're working on that, but it's not gonna happen this season. And these are temporary facilities, although they are hooked up fairly permanent. They're hooked up to the town's water and sewer system, where they don't have to be pumped out, and they would have to be cleaned similar to the one under the bridge, but they wouldn't have to be pumped out. They would go directly into the town's water, you know, they would use the town's water, and the sewage would be collected with the town's sewer system. They're air-conditioned. They have air-conditioning, and they have lights, and they have, it's ADA compliant. The town will have to build a ramp, an ADA-compliant ramp up to it for, so it would be ADA-compliant. And so I just took it upon itself to make a few calls and get some price on it, but I would think it would be something to at least put at the pier, if we didn't do anything further. I think it would be great to have one at the pier and to have one at the east end, and if you had to borrow it for a festival or that type of thing, we could pull it up here to kind of add on to the two that we have under the bridge. You could move one as you needed it, but like down at the east end, we're in the same situation. You got a ton of people, ton of people, and no facilities. And I'm just, I just thought that this would be a good time to bring this to everybody's attention. Now, I don't know if we could get it in place this summer. They have fairly long lead times, like June to July to even get one. I looked into used ones, they're not that much cheaper than a new one, so they obviously hold their resale value very well. It would be something that when the permanent restrooms were eventually installed at the pier, we could possibly move it somewhere else and set it back up, because we have, I think, Chris, you would say that we have the ability to put water sewer connection, you know, basically anywhere as long as we got some property, but.
That conversation, we already had that the one time.
So I think, definitely consider it for the pier for now, even like right now, the upcoming season coming, and just see how it works. If you want to try, the only other option at this, at this juncture is to keep doing what we got, and it's disgusting. So I just, that's my opinion. So I don't think anybody would disagree with that, but.
Well, the Doc Dyer gave me some information to investigate myself, as well as while we were at the hurricane convention, ran into a group down there that gets there from, their system from Satellite Industries, which are basically, they're all comparably priced. The good part about it is, you know, we're in a, we're in an area that is corrosive to anything. These are, do have a steel structure, as far as the bottom of them are concerned, but they are all, both the ones that Brian is looking at and the one at Satellite Sources, or Satellite Industries, they're all dipped, so they will, you know, the integrity of the steel under them will stay in good shape. And the exterior of them are fiberglass, which you all know that that's, it's still gonna have some, some wear, but the fiberglass and aluminum structural top will be a whole lot better for the environment they're gonna be in. As Brent was made a note, this is something, we plan to start, hopefully, as soon as we get all the engineering work with putting some restrooms, permanent ADA-approved restaurant, restrooms permanently at the pier. But in the meantime, something needs to be done. And those facilities, like you say, all will be hooked up, they be hooked up to a permanent drain and a permanent input of water and permanent electricity, but they can be removed. They won't be there, it won't be a forever thing. But I agree with Brian, there's, there's two locations on this island that desperately need that. After we use it at the pier, we can move it over here to Block Q until we get those restrooms finished. I mean, it's just, it's not so bad for us guys, but the ladies, I mean, it's absolutely ridiculous to be in there, and it's 95 degrees outside, well, it's 120 inside that little compartment. So it's, I agree with Brian that we need to see about moving forward. We, there are, there's, the issue now is lead time. You know, everybody's got supply chain issues. We can work with these two or three different companies and see if, who can we get, get us, get us one the quickest, and, and get it here, and get it set up. I think this one is in Indiana. Where's?
Look, Keith, I just, I just went for the manufacturer's one that's in Sunset Beach that's fairly old, and it's held up good, so it's got a track record down there. There's actually two of them. But I would suggest somebody do their homework on where to source one, because I, I didn't take the time to shop. So you may get one cheaper, or, you know, I would just, my feeling is we need to get at least one and try. I don't think it's gonna hurt a thing, and I think if, if it's a flop and it doesn't work, that'd be the worst case, and we could sell. So I don't think it's a asset that we're gonna buy today, and we're gonna lose tomorrow. So I think it's worth a shot.
Kind of sums it up. I think the need is there, and.
The need's there.
If it doesn't work out, you can get something out of it, and you can move it from up there down here if.
Wherever it's needed, yeah.
Madam Clerk, what do we need to do to, do we need to make a motion to move forward with this?
I would direct the staff to.
All right.
Well, I would make a motion to direct the staff to procure at least one mobile restroom trailer that can be hooked up to public water and sewers. There is a difference between, well, I'd like to see three, but, I mean, at least one. I left it at that, but I mean, there's a difference between how they're manufactured, if they're hooked up to permanent, more permanent sources, or if you're actually gonna use them for.
How much do they cost?
They range, depending on the size, or how many stalls or whatnot you would use. The one at Sunset Beach is, there's four for the men, there's three for the women, and there's one for ADA. And they all have sinks, they all have hot and cold water, they all have soap, they all have paper towels, they even have a baby changing station in there. They have trash cans, they have a ramp, and they're clean. Somebody cleans them every day, which that's gonna be, that's gonna be an expense that, that we would have if we had any kind of restroom. So they, but to answer your question, they range, from what I've found out, for something that you would even source, like a one-stall, a two-stall men's and a one-stall women's and a one-stall handicap, is like $45,000. And for another $25,000, you can get three or four for the men, three for the women, and one for the handicapped. So I would, that's, you have to base that on what you think the demand's gonna be.
I would encourage you commissioners in your discussion, give the town manager direction on the funds and amount. He's got to have direction where the money's coming from, or clarification, and the amount that you're authorizing him to spend. Mr. Hewitt, you want to address that?
Well, I was just trying to figure out how much it would cost, and I was just going off of this, this one quote, and I've never been to anybody's house, I've never been to a ballgame, I've never been to any type of event where there was enough bathrooms. So the, so what I would say is that the chic that you got here, that we would use the one with the most bathrooms, and especially, we'd better make sure that we have more women's bathrooms than we have men's bathrooms. Those are the two, the two mistakes that I've been guilty of in the past. So, I mean, that one's $75,000, and you're gonna have to build, you're gonna have to build some type of ramp to get to it, and we're gonna have to figure out how we're gonna handle the impact fees, and we could certainly be above $100,000 in, in the cost, which, you know, is what it is. The budgets that exist right now for the pier and for the on-street, off-street parking, that, that money is sufficient enough to do some of the things, but I think short of just y'all telling me to find a thing, a bathroom that'll work up there at the pier would be sufficient.
Okay, that's good wording for me. You have to say the $100,000 is around.
That's, that's what I'm thinking. If it's horribly different from that, I'll come back to you.
Hopefully, it's a lot cheaper than that. But they do flush, they do go away, so you're not.
The, the, the one, the one thing that I'd like, Brian mentioned it, is that in addition to just the facility, it's gonna take some, it's gonna take some maintenance down there. When I say maintenance, an attendant during the summertime. So that would be a follow-on kind of thing that we can, we can work that later. I'm not so much concerned about that right now, but it will be a requirement.
Well, I'll second Brian's motion, and I would really be more in favor of two, but if we can get one to get started and see how it works, we'll have to, let's do that. And the east end of the beach, hopefully, is not gonna go away, so something we could maybe do in the future.
Madam Clerk, would you read the motion back?
To direct the staff to procure at least one mobile restroom trailer that can be hooked up to water and sewer.
Okay. The motion maker want to add the monetary side of that?
With the, I would put a cap on the $75,000 quote, because the rest of it is after the fact, expenses, right?
Yeah, but I can't, I can't, I can't buy a car without the tires.
Guys, you're gonna get that, though, but you.
You're gonna get everything.
Would you need to two-part the motion to then build the, what it takes to, to make it work, the ramp and all that? You can say $100,000 if that's what you want.
Just stay on $100,000, make it work with the $100,000, yeah.
The complete end product.
And if it's more than that, I'll come back to you.
All right, everybody understand the motion?
Yes, sir.
And who, who was it that seconded?
I seconded it.
You agree to that amendment?
Say it to the.
Okay. Amended motion. Everybody in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Unanimous. All right.
Well, that's one for the girls.
Number 16, Dr. Dyer.
So we're on the subject of bathroom facilities. I'd like to have a discussion, possible action for the property at 796, the plans that, is this Mr. Woods, Christie, that, the plans that were drawn up and presented to, to us a few months back, I'd like to, and he amended to have the outdoor showers and bathrooms, to see that the move forward with the project at 796, to at least doing phases, where we start with restroom facilities, and maybe could phase in the second, the first and second story facilities later. I think we're running into the same situation down there with the amount of people that have been parking there since, through the winter, and the violations that we have for people parking in the right-of-ways. There are no facilities. There's not even a portage on down there, because that's only done in the summer. So there's absolutely nowhere for those people to go to the bathroom. And on social media, they've posted that the 800 block and the 700 block are the popular place to go shelling. So I think that, and it's mentioned several times, just park under somebody's house, just goes here under somebody's house. So I think we really need to prefer, to go ahead with this project, at least in phases, and get bathrooms and shower facilities, especially handicap bathrooms for that public access that's in that location.
Well, with us going into the budget part of budget season, and having a budget meeting later this week, I think we need to maybe. I think we need to, to maybe see what funds we would have available before we make any direct moves, but we need to make sure we've got the funds to do it.
Mm-hmm.
But I agree, something needs to be done, whether it be upgrade the bathrooms, rent it to recoup some of the repair costs or do the entire project. But at this point, we need to kinda see where we're at. But I agree, something needs to be done. Mr. Hewitt, has the, the, the work on the, the structure started as yet? Did you know of?
Have they issued a permit, Tim, do you know?
Um, I don't know that would, I wouldn't, that permits, like a permit, so it could've been issued already, but I don't recall anybody talking about it, it could've been issued.
We're good.
I hadn't noticed.
He said he pulled his permits and that he planned to start work, um, I guess, so we could go, he planned to start two weeks, so about a week out.
Thank you, Christie, that's good. Long as I hopefully agree done soon.
Anything else, Dr. Dyer? Okay, Public Works, Mr. Clemmons, rooftop lease agreement. We're on number seventeen on the agenda.
As the mayor said, this is a reference to rooftop lease agreement. Deech Wireless has contacted the town, have a lot of place equipment on the water tower. Their proposed agreement is in the package you, you reviewed. But, uh, without digging through that review there, they've offered up fifteen hundred dollars a month is what they've actually offered us. And I had asked, looked, uh, with, got it with Daniel, looked at what the other companies are paying, which are bigger companies, like sale companies and stuff like that, and they're paying like around two thousand dollars a month. But this is only three Deech Pantanas and I really don't know if that's a fair price. It seems like it is, but I would assume, you know, if I go to buy a car, I got a price and they got one. You know? So I don't know if it'd be something, maybe it'd be interesting to just approve it or maybe we draw up something and, and, and tell them what we want. You know, I'm not a professional in that field. I wish we had somebody that really knew what they were doing on that. I don't know, we could be losing some of the ones we have. I did not know, I was just giving some background information of what we got going on. I hope we got four carriers right now.
How many square feet are they asking for versus what others paying for?
It's only about three codes on it, uh, Allen and this small Pantana, like I said, all the other stuff that you see all the way around it, that's the equipment of, of four different companies and there are like five or six codes these. But roughly, you know, that's, that's eighteen thousand dollars a year, you know? If that's getting anything, you know, if we're gonna take that consideration, you know, I think we'll try to negotiate, get the maximum amount out of them. Daniel actually sent an email and requested a little more, but we never heard anything back from them.
Well, he's exactly right, there's a big wide gap.
Yeah, I said it's, it's a lot, you know, I know there's a lot of differences in customer base and all that right there, but if they just pony up so, you know, we give you fifteen hundred dollars, you know, I'm sure, you know, like I said, and I go buy a car, I ain't gonna give them, offer up, give them the maximum amount, you know, in the beginning.
Much pleasure, the board.
Daniel, did, what is, uh, say, most of the, the ones that are up there now are at the two thousand dollar mark?
Yeah, anywhere from eighteen hundred to twenty-three hundred, something like that for the bigger carrier.
And it also may be something good if we, you know, if we do decide, go through with it, maybe just do like a year contract or something like that from the beginning, just to make sure we don't get something there we don't want for a long period of time.
Mr. Hewitt, have you got any input on, on that, sir?
I, that entire revenue stream that comes off that water tower is, is over a hundred thousand dollars a year. Um, I don't know if that, uh, is, is a good amount or a, an okay amount. It's, some amount is better than nothing amount that...
I thought it told it.
Yeah.
Well, I'd say, well, they do say, no, but then they got the...
That's what, my answer would be, go for more. If you don't get it, then certainly take this. I mean, that's eighteen thousand dollars, eighteen thousand dollars.
Yeah.
Um, that's what I would do.
I, I, I agree with what you said though, uh, you know, I'd like to make a motion, we approve the, the lease agreement, but for only one year, to see if they, if they would go for that.
I think...
That way we can see if...
I would pursue the two thousand.
Give them some flexibility though, if you can get the price up and back.
Yeah. Can you aggressively ask for two thousand of them? And just...
Yeah, we can ask for two thousand and, um...
You said you sent an email, but they didn't respond.
Yeah.
Can we do it a little more aggressively maybe?
Yeah, uh, did, did they list a contact number and something?
Uh, it may have it on the email, Daniel, but I don't, may have it on there.
Well, just keep in mind that this is public records, so they can read what we're saying here.
Yeah, that's reasonable. That's reasonable, some of them might just live, I didn't say...
I mean, if we're gonna ask them for more and sit here in the meeting, say we'll take what they're gonna give us.
Yeah, yeah. I'd love to have that speaker in there. Sales of all the car dealership.
I would just present it, I would just present a contract for two thousand.
You wanna make that a motion? Or we have a motion? Where are we? Repeat the motion.
He said, but he hasn't put a value in. He just said ask for a year lease.
Oh, okay.
Would you like to put a value in?
Two thousand dollars.
Okay.
All right, and is there a second?
Second.
All right. Everybody understand the motion, offering a contract for two thousand dollars a month for one year? Any more discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Opposed, say no. Unanimous, Madam Clerk? Number eighteen, Mr. Murdock. Empty seat.
We do have empty seat, regrettably. Um, again, um, I'm, I'm just asking you guys what you wanna do about it. Um, I think the procedure is, we're probably far enough out from any election type of thing that we need to fill this seat, in my opinion, to get the public adequately represented up here. And my suggestion to the board, what I would like to see is to put it back out there for any interest in being commissioner, have them come in and do the interview and fill the seat, um, just like we did the last time. I think if we did it, uh, my original thought was to go to the second place of the last time we did it because it wasn't that long ago, but that, that's been long enough, I think, to probably redo it. There may be some new interests and I don't wanna leave anybody out. So I think we need to fill the seat. And I've heard different opinions, so we all have to agree on it. And I don't know the legal, what we need to do, um, or what we're required to do. So you can speak to that if you want, Heather and, or David.
So the statute says that the board shall fill it, but it doesn't tell you how you should fill it, when you should fill it, what you need to do to fill it. So it is going to be on the ballot for this year, even though her term wouldn't have expired for the four years, so the two years, it'll be on there as a two-year term. So you guys could fill it today, you could fill it three months from now, you could not fill it, it's completely up to the board how you wanna do it. And you could do whatever process you wanna do also. So you guys just have to decide how you wanna move forward, is what it comes down to.
Well, the elections are in November, correct?
Correct, they're in November and Board of Elections already been notified. They know to put it on there for the two years, so it'll be on there as a separate...
And, and the filing is in July?
July, correct.
My only thought is we've already, which we, we, we had some good candidates and so forth, but if it takes a couple months to fill it, it won't be before more meetings, before we have, uh, before we have the election. And letting the general public elect the replacement might be more, uh, island-friendly to, to the people that live here. Let them make a, let them make the decision instead of, of us. But again, this, uh, that's, if it was another year out, I would say we need to, to do something immediately. But I think it's, uh, personally, I think it would be best to, to wait to November and, and feel that we've only got six more meetings and it'll take a couple to get in and then by the time they get really settled in and, and going, uh, you know, it'll be time for the election and I'm just not sure if that's the, the best way to go.
Anyone else got anything to say?
Well, if we handle it during the election, then like you said, the public can pick, but the only thing concerning with that, the last election had less than eight, a hundred people voting. And so when the pier properties and everything came up and everybody screamed, "We'll vote you out", there's not really enough, I think, public interest. Um, and it needs to change, I think, 'cause less than a hundred people voted at the last election. So it'd be nice to let the public, so that when things happen, when we buy the pier, we buy Block Q and people are complaining about it, um, you know, there's not enough showing at the, the polls to, to justify the complaints, I think.
Judge, you got anything you wanna say?
In line with what Rick said, the filings are in July, which is right here, the time you turn around.
All right, if the chair doesn't hear a motion, we're gonna move on. Much pleasure.
I would, um, I will make a motion to fill the seat. I think, um, as we did it the last time, by letting the public submit ballots and then we do interview and then we seat someone. I think it's important to have five people up here, um, and, and that's my opinion. So you, you can all say no and that's fine and I don't understand, but for, for me personally, I think the, the town of Hoboken Beach is not represented if there's not five, six filled up here. That's, that's my opinion.
All right, you made a motion. Is that right?
Yeah.
Okay, and what was the motion?
The motion was to fill the seat by...
As we did the last.
As we did the last time, by interested people submitting before the next.
Okay.
And, and we'll have interview at the following meeting, which they would be seated, I guess, for five or six meetings, Rick, if I did the math right, if, if we get them seated in sixty days. So I, I say fill the seat, but you guys gonna do nothing.
So you're talking about in June?
You would fill, somebody would seat in June, that's correct.
Is there a second?
Will that term be held for two years, is that correct?
If you fill the seat, it would only go until the election, 'cause the election's gonna decide who's gonna take it over in December.
It's only for a few months.
Yeah, it would just be until the ele...
June, July, August, September, October, November.
Six meetings.
All right, hearing no second, we'll move on. Number nineteen, Mr. McCraney.
The town wishes to move a portion of funds from an underperforming money market account into the NC class, which is a very safe, triple-A rated and liquid investment pool for local governments. Um, the attached resolution and joint agreement must be signed with town board.
Now, exactly what is this North Carolina Cooperative Liquid Asset Security System?
Um, it's just a new investment pool for local governments. Um, it's very safe, it's triple-A rated, like I said, um, and you've got same-day availability of the funds if you need them, which is, we're not gonna move funds from our operations account. This is already in a money market account. And it's just, right now, we're only earning five one-hundredths of a percent. So, not good.
This, uh... This, uh, North Carolina Cooperative Liquid Asset Security System on us there, right?
Um, it's very new, but they're estimating about four-tenths, so a lot more. And realistic.
And they won't, won't tie up our funds while we can't use them if we have an emergency?
Yeah, no, we can, we can get them the same day.
All right, I'll make a motion, we approve the North Carolina Cooperative Liquid Edge Systems, Security System to handle our underperforming funds. No second to that.
Any more discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous, Madam Clerk? All right, number twenty, Mr. Smith.
Yes, sir, I just, uh, this particular motion came from some requests from a few of our property owners here at the beach. Uh, the, the town has procured in the past year or so quite a few new vehicles, uh, and they are, some of them, uh, aren't properly marked. Uh, I would like to, uh, see if I could get, uh, I'd like to make a motion to task the town manager to install, uh, the town seal on all city-operated equipment and that is with an exception of the police vehicles that are unmarked.
Is there a second?
I'll second that. What do you mean by equipment?
Not a lawnmower, it's Brian.
Gotcha.
Vehicle, four-tire cars, license tag. Thank you there for the clarification. Motor vehicle.
Now, I have a question. We've got a motion, do we get a second?
You can discuss it.
All right, got a second for discuss. How about people like Mr. Evans that comes in on weekends and, I don't wanna say sneaks around, but he's on, he's on duty going to these job sites for weekend activities and other reasons, which he knows about, I guess. The, it's hard to sneak up on somebody if you...
Everybody here in this building knows what truck he's got. He can't, the only way he could sneak would be driving his own car or somebody else's, sir. I mean, they know what the man drives.
You really believe that? All these people, all these homeowners down here know just what he drives?
Well, not the homeowners, but they...
Well, that's the ones coming in...
Well, if these catches them doing something, they need to know who's doing it. I don't see that, you know, it's not, it's not like, uh...
I don't have a dog in this fight, I was just pointing out something.
Okay. I just think all the vehicles need to be properly marked, so everybody knows what's the town vehicles are being operated in the town.
Whatever your commissioners want.
How many are we talking about? How many is an expense? That's, I don't have probably...
It's probably half a dozen vehicles at most.
What expense do you have that?
It's, it's a couple of decals, I'm thinking. It's about that big for six, so what's that, twelve decals? Two hundred fifty, three hundred dollars? I, I'm, I don't know.
Not that much.
Okay, well, you need to put a money to it.
It's just that we'll be using decals instead of the magnet ones that we did before.
Cars are made out of metal anymore.
Yeah.
All right, we have a motion?
Is that, I will ask Tim if you think that's detrimental to what you do. Um, or anybody to have a marked vehicle?
I'll, I'll go to the bump, the bump, some of it, but, I mean, it doesn't make a difference to me. They don't make a difference to me, but I will tell you, yes, people that come here doing work here on the weekends, they aren't contractors from here. There's a guy that's coming here on Friday evening to have to, to load the lumber and what happens is they deliver their lumber on Friday evening. We usually ride down, see the lumber and then what the effort is, they come over here and, and they do pay attention. They can see me from three streets over in the canals and they was, and now... They can see me from three streets over in the canals, and that's how we catch them. We just stop on a canal, go down the west end, and I can hear the song running, but then I gotta go find them, and they see me before I see them. And there's a good portion of these homes, I can tell, I can tell you about three homes right now that hid from me for months, when I had, when I had the logos on the granny truck. The one that had my house, had my name on the side of the house down here, it hit probably three months before it got there. 595 or 596 hid from us for two months before we got there. And then there was one that I think y'all have, you got a good portion of the emails that went back and forth with them, and I think Joel finally caught up with them, just making contact with license plate. I can't remember where Chris built the house, but you know the house I'm talking about. They tore the walls and everything out, put up fake sods. They hid from us. And it, some of these houses, they know that we're coming, and yes, they, you know, most of the contractors that work here in other truck we have, I will tell you this, most of the contractors that are here every day that know that truck, they aren't doing work without permits.
No, sir.
It is the folks that are, it's the folks that want to bring their, their economically-driven workers from other places to do their work on the weekends at a, at a market value much less than what we do. And I hate the, well, I will tell you that whenever we catch them, the value of the work is usually exactly what they pay for. And when you have that kind of work being done, then you can go ahead and count on it being of some sort of an effect to neighboring properties, or possibly could be, which is not a good thing if we have storms, high winds, or water. So I, I'm not advocating, it doesn't, it really doesn't make a difference to me, because I, I had it on there for years, but if, if, if I wanted to, I would tell you, if you want the truck to be logo, then logo it, you know what I mean? But that would be the only thing. And I do come over here on Saturday mornings, as a matter of fact, I almost come over here on Sunday morning, because I had, I get phone calls.
Stop by, I'll give you a couple of calls.
Yeah, I get phone calls and I come over here and, because other contractors understand what's going on.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, licensed contractors don't wanna have to be against unlicensed contractors for work that they're doing at them.
I would support it, but I, I think we should leave out one, one building inspection vehicle for that.
Well, the zoning officer vehicle needs to be logoed.
Yeah.
And the reason being is, is that they, there is a lot of entry there that I think the chief can tell about, but there's, if you're not really identified yourself, unlike someone doing work and breaking the law, when I find, but a zoning officer needs to have pure identification when they start strolling on private property.
I agree. This day and time especially.
So, yeah, I, I don't, the zoning, the, the actual code enforcement vehicle that has not, we didn't load, the last one was logoed, and we had it retained, because we were trying to maintain a 2006 vehicle, and so we had it bumped out and we didn't put the logo back on, because we weren't expected to use the truck that much in the middle when we replaced it. That vehicle didn't get a logo because of what it was, and we were afraid it would do some damage, but I don't know about the logo. You do know that those logos, in some cases, become an issue when you resell a vehicle because of what they do to the paint, so.
That's all gone online anyway, but it, don't matter.
Okay, any more questions, discussions? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Do you know, if it's a cast? All right, public comments on general items, anything that you want to brag about or complain about. Can the podium give us your name, address? Three minutes, Madam Clerk.
Thank you very much, my name's Ryan Pascal, our house is at 187 Fish Drive, and I would like to bring up the, the concept of the park development project, and I think it's very important that you guys know, you just said that less than 100 people voted in the election last year. We've got, you know, three times that many signatures in opposition to this plan, and so I think it's very important that people who are stakeholders in this community, the property owners, are recognized in this. And I read in the email from the town last night that McGill, who is, who you all contracted with to get a plan together, will have a representative at the park and also at the concert on Memorial Day weekend, and to be honest with you, I can't imagine that at either of those places, they're gonna talk to a whole lot of property owners. I think they're gonna talk to a whole lot of people who are here for a party at, here at the concert, and they're gonna be talking to a lot of people at the park who are there to fish or do whatever, but those are not the, not the voices that we need to be concerned with. We need to be concerned with the property owners here. We don't need to waste any money on things that are gonna be detrimental to our lifestyles here. And when I'm talking about lifestyles, I'm talking about the traffic that comes down Selfish Drive to come to the park. It's already excessive, and if you do further improvements there, the traffic is gonna be that much worse. And so my point is, somebody has come up with this plan, and maybe it sounds like a good idea, and in a perfect world, maybe it would be nice to have some facilities there, that's not the right location, the traffic there is already inappropriate.
Anyone else?
Hey, my name is Carol Money Penny, and my family's had a house around the corner there on Selfish for over 50 years, since 1971. So in the summers I grew up, went out to Selfish all the time. It has always been used by, by people that live in the area that can walk and bike there, and also a lot of people on the mainland have come there to fish for decades. And I mean decades, everyone loves that spot. So over the years, we've had people, well, we've had the town want to put facilities down there, but the neighbors, because of its beauty, because of its location adjacent to the wetlands, it has beautiful shade trees, it's a very unusual spot on the beach, and I would argue that our street has more walkers, bike riders, families, people trekking up and down our street than anywhere on the beach. And a huge thing that I think was not considered in the master plan is the fact that all of our canals are dead ends pretty much. They are not interconnected to the public spaces, and when you put a project like that down at the end of the street, it becomes, there, there are things that go on that are not desirable for our street. When you have public parking, you have people there after hours, there are no buffers between the neighbors and the parking. Literally, people have to half the time back into the, the property owner's driveways to get out down there. So there's not good ingress in and out. We've heard of drug problems, alcohol problems, we've heard of a homeless guy camping out on the spill. I've had neighbors talk about finding, you know, beer cans, seeing people passed out. We're concerned if you put bathrooms down there, that we're gonna have, you know, issues with heroin and fentanyl and all of that. I mean, well, really, Ricky, when you have a place where people can come at night at the end of a dead-end road that's not regularly patrolled, you know, it's not a joke. I mean, we've got tons of little kids on the street. We have no sidewalks. Every house on a canal, people, when they go with their families and children or pets to the beach, they have to walk in the road. So when you come in and you put public points of interest in our residential neighborhoods, you are making all of us vulnerable to oncoming traffic, not to mention, I can't tell you how many people, and myself included, have had problems and had to be confrontational with people parking you in your driveway. Most recently, I had, I came down, had people, my chairs on the back porch in a circle, on the back porch elevated two flights up with cigarette butts, where somebody had a party on my back porch, smoking cigarettes. Now, your poor last, the, the house six stories down burnt down, and the grass caught on fire, came all the way up to our property line. I had burns on the decks. I mean, there are huge issues that we're introducing, putting these projects there, not to mention the $250,000 price tag that was, that was, you know, in the appendix D in the Parks and Rec Master Plan. I mean, we had a petition in 2004, we want to keep that area in preservation and conservation, we want it to be natural. We do not want a bunch of stuff down there. Future generations deserve to take their children and grandchildren down there on their bicycles and enjoy the beauty of that wetland environment. The marsh is beautiful, you see the intercoastal. When you get to the end, it's lovely, it's shaded, we have benches and tables, people fish all day long, it's at max capacity all summer. Therefore, we have a petition, same petition that was submitted in 2004, that has, right now, we have 95 and they have 60 plus on line. I mean, I feel pretty good about that, since there were only 100 voters, you know?
The time's up. Commissioners want to let her keep talking, or you want her?
I think we've got, we understand this.
Thank you. All right, yes, sir.
I'm Rick McInturf, 122 Friggin', like to put our attention back to item 15 for just a second, these trailer bathrooms, I've got some experience with these things. I renovated a football stadium, real large stadium, and while we were rebuilding the visitor's side, we installed two of these large units. They are nice, they are serviceable, they, they were hooked into the sewer system, they were clean, and, and worked out well. Two, two recommendations, David. Our units had the ramps attached to them, the handicap ramp was a part of the unit, they were handicapped accessible and all of that. The other thing is, don't totally forego the concept of leasing them. We had a two-year lease on these units while we were under construction.
Hey, what you doing tomorrow?
I'm not sure where we got them, I'll try to find out for you.
May, maybe we can, maybe we can talk some more.
Yeah, okay, all right, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else? Yes, ma'am.
Marty Era Wood, 114 Shrimp Street, I just want to thank Christie, Heather, and the town staff for the wonderful Easter egg hunt that we had the Saturday before Easter. There were two sets of, it was, the weather went from 80 degrees to, I think, snow, but we had a large crowd here, everybody thoroughly enjoyed themselves, and I just know that it took a lot of time and effort, and I want to thank you for making it special for the people that were here. Thanks.
Tom Myers, I'm at 301 Ocean Boulevard West, but I'm the president of the Home Property Owners Association, and I'm speaking on behalf of HBPOA. At our meeting on April 8th, the property owners on Selfish asked for our help in supporting them in opposition to the park, you've heard from them, and our members passed the resolution that we would, we would help them. So I think you've heard from the property owners, you know, the concerns. I know that you're conducting a survey right now, we've seen it, to gather opinions, I assume you're looking for the, you know, what the majority of people want, I guess, having some experience with surveys, a couple of concerns. There's only 37 houses on Selfish, so it's gonna be real easy for them to get outnumbered in a survey perspective, and in fact, if you're going to the beach and you're going to the East End, you're going to the, to the concerts, odds are you can outnumber, you get more opinions from people that don't live here than you would from people that are property owners on the island. So I just want to make the point that the property owners on Selfish have the most at stake here, even though there's only 37, and please look at the survey results and understand the differences of opinions between people that live here and people that don't live here and want us to do things, and please give the property owners on Selfish the weight consideration that they deserve, because they have so much at stake. Thanks.
Chat Hawk, 1222 Ocean Boulevard West, I wanted to actually address the survey case directly, but I'm lucky enough to come from the tech world, and I can say doing surveys through Facebook is extremely ineffective. You're not getting anything that's actually accurate. There are two ways that I would propose you consider going forward. One, you should have a formal survey within the water bill that goes out, the people can have a formal link, that then they would have to block it. But that's, but then you cannot forget our renters. So by going through the rental agencies and asking them to go to their renters, that they already have contact with, ask for the survey process. That way you get to people that are actually affecting your account based on the terms of taxes. But Facebook, Instagram, Twitter, I can tell you right now, it's not good. But other than that, I wanted to actually thank you for everything you guys do.
Anyone else want to speak? Yes, sir.
Evening, everyone. My name is Rick Parkes, I'm at 140 Tarpon Drive. I want to talk about Selfish just a little bit here. A lot of people have covered what I want to talk about. I would like to see the park stay natural as it is. As I've mentioned before, most of that park is in the Army Corps' right-of-way. If the Army Corps needs to use that right-of-way, they'll tear your stuff down and they're not gonna put it back. I think the park is meeting the community's needs, from what I've seen. If we develop it, those problems with speeding and substance abuse are ongoing growth, and I know some of the folks have had problems with noise down there. The town's got a lot of projects going on right now, and you don't have bids out for any of them, and it's, you know, we've got reassessments going on, a lot of things up in the air financially. This park is not a must-do right now, so I would like to see you just stop spending on that one, because the other things have it, I think, more important. I too am concerned about online surveys. Your Facebook page has 23,000 followers. 2,700 property owners will get polluted, if not totally obfuscated by that type of ratio. We just don't stand a chance. And personally, if you're not paying the tax bill, bill, or the department, I don't think you really get a vote on how our tax money's spent. Want to shift gears real quick to canals. One of the problems I see with canals and docks is we're getting a lot bigger boats in there. I mean, we're getting twin-engine boats in there, I've got one that's 31 feet sitting in there, another 28 footer. I, my dock was permanent, and I sure hate to have you guys come back and say, "I have to move," because you said it was okay when you were there. On the inlet issue, is Ocean Isle helping out with that, or are we carrying the burden? I don't know. But it's a shared inlet, so I'm just asking.
Well, we're not supposed to exchange, but, no.
Okay, all right.
Ocean Isle is not paying anything on-
Oak Island.
Oak Island, yes, excuse me, I'm sorry.
Okay, Oak Isle.
Same answer, different island?
Well, we'll wait, we'll wait and see how they do this time.
Okay, and I too would like to thank you for all the stuff you're, you do. I like Brian, what you said about the bathrooms, I think that's a good idea. I've never been in a porta potty, I liked, so. Anyway, thanks for your-
Anyone else want to speak about anything?
Steve Money Penny, 1008 Ocean Boulevard West, and we own some property there on Selfish, and I'll make it short, I hope that you leave it as is. It's been wonderful for many, many years with what we have out there, and I'd like to see it just left as it is.
Thank you. I saw somebody else.
Hi, everyone, I'm Sandra Fidel. We bought our house on Selfish at 142 about five and a half years ago, and we're very blessed to be on that marsh view and have a small park at the end of our street, and we do enjoy it with our grandchildren, our family and our dog, and my concern is the safety. There are a number of vehicles that roll down through there 11 o'clock at night, I mean, where else are they going? They're not my neighbors, because the truck's full in the back, people are in the back of the pickup truck, and I think if you enhance the park the way you're speaking of and create facilities, then I don't, I don't, I don't know how that's gonna be managed so that the safety will, will be better. I also think what other people have said is that you have other things on your plate, like I love the, the pier, the idea Brian brought up about bringing those, I mean, we've seen them at golf facilities and sporting events, other sporting events, having that facility at the pier where we- Um, having that facility at the pier where we have the greatest population and also at the East End, those are, those are great ideas. We want to serve the, the day trippers, and, um, that's where they spend their time because that's where they can park. So I think that's a great idea, but I would appreciate it. You leave Sailfish, park along. Thanks.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to speak?
Brent Schaber, one-twenty-one Tarpon. I think we've got a, a really nice park in the end of Sailfish. Um, I agree with most of what everybody has, has said here. Right now, it's been used for years and years and enjoyed by young enough. It's not fancy. It's not primitive. It's, it's a sweet spot. Um, and also second, the town seems to have a lot on its plate right now, business-wise and money-wise. Sailfish Park is not broken. If you have two-hundred thousand dollars to spend, I think Brian's idea about the larger portable toilets at the pier and the East End make a whole lot more sense than spending money on Sailfish Park that's not broken and everybody's enjoying it.
Thanks, sir.
Thanks for listening.
Anyone else? We don't want to miss anybody.
Me. Yeah, we'll do that, Steve. I'm here for, to support all my neighbors and to let everyone know that I agree with everything that's been said today, and I, I think you guys are doing a great job. But most importantly, I think that I would like for people to understand what the beauty is on Sailfish. I've lived there, I've lived there eighteen years, and I watch every night at sunset, I mean, hundreds of people walking down that street, riding bicycles, dogs, and they have to go down the middle of the street, which I love because there's not a sidewalk. But these people are just walking and, and in front of my house, which I'm so blessed to have, and thank you, Sandra, for mentioning that, is this wonderful sunset, and the sunset goes from here on the intercoastal all the way to the beach, and I watch it go there from season to season. And I know I'm blessed to see that, but I also watch photographers stand there, and they have children, they have dogs, they have families, and the families might go on with their bicycles and, and the kids might be over here, but they're standing there and they see this sunset, and automatically they see this deer come out in this natural marsh area. And they just stop, and they forget their family, they forget the kids, they forget what's going on, and they start taking pictures of the sunset. Increasing any vehicle traffic down this road is a mistake, and we love what it does now for the community. We don't want to see it change. We think that it's perfect. We think it's beautiful, and we just hope that you guys will go back and look at the plan that we obviously did not pay enough attention to, that was approved in twenty-one while we all had COVID, okay? And we all just forgot what was going on. But go back to the plan and let's look at Sailfish, please, one more time, and just, just take a look at what it actually does for the community and for those people. I would guess that the majority of the people on this beach and visitors go past that street at least one time on their visit here, whether you're a resident, whether you're visiting, whether you are off the island or on the island, or you're renting. I think that you're going to take a, a visit down that street, and you're going to love it because it's just natural and it's beautiful. So I just ask you to please reconsider the study, and most importantly, and maybe we need to look at it and go back in time and just strike out some of these items at two-hundred fifty thousand dollars for a covered area when it's so shaded already and a bathroom facility that's just not needed down there. And I appreciate it again, all that you do.
Thank you, ma'am. Madam Clerk, you got all those names and addresses known?
Yes, sir.
All right. Are we ready for Mr. Hewitt?
Yes, sir. Very briefly tonight, I wanted to remind everybody that the, the budget workshop is Thursday, this Thursday, day after tomorrow, the twentieth of April at five thirty. Five thirty is the budget workshop. Uh, the second thing is that our continued discussions with Brunswick County, um, where they have put forward that Brunswick County is going to be considering cutting off sewer service during hurricane events with a projected storm surge of greater than four feet. Um, we're working with Brunswick County just to see what those details are. That has not been put forth yet for action by the commissioners and the county staff, but everybody should be aware that Brunswick County is, um, setting forth an initiative that will affect how sewer service collection, um, at their level is going to be provided during a hurricane where the storm surge is projected at being four feet or greater, which is basically every hurricane that we get. Um, and lastly, uh, an update on the bike path. Uh, those costs came in, uh, they, it was rebidded, and the bottom line on it is that since the cost went up, uh, they do have an acceptable bid now, and the bottom line for the town is we're going to see our costs go up a hundred thousand dollars approximately on the bike path, and we'll have some formulation agreements to bring back to the board before we can, before we can X out on that. Those are the only three things I have tonight.
Any questions of the town manager and the commissioners?
Is that bid, they're going to be starting in January though, right?
I'm sorry, I didn't hear you.
That bid that they said that they've, looking at, that's still going to be?
You're talking about the bike path?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, the construction right now is still programmed to start after Labor Day of twenty-three and be finished before Memorial Day of twenty-four.
Cross your fingers. Okay, Mayor's report. I had a question of me a few days ago. Down at Block Q, there's some hearing signs still up down there. Does anybody know?
Hearing, like, someone is impaired?
Oh, we'll, we'll take those up. That was just the street closing. I forgot about.
Okay. Okay. Is any possibility of me getting some light up here?
I already have public works for the morning. I'll have it done. I'll have it done for you.
I know I'm not good to look at, but I'd like to see my pad, you know, better.
Which, no, it's good, I won't.
The budget, uh, workshop, it is a workshop this Thursday. I will probably not be able to attend. I've got some other public responsibilities I have to deal with. I've had several phone calls and emails basically saying the same thing, those that spoke, opposed to Sailfish, um, activity or projected projects or whatever. Uh, I haven't had anybody that has called to support it, and several people asked me to report that. No wake zones. The Sheriff's Department put the buoys out and around the bridge. That was last year? That was last? And already this year, the wake problem, I believe, is worse than it has been before. And, um, the, my recollection is that the town has the possibility and ability, if it so chooses, to put no-wake buoys on the south side of the channel in the already-identified no-wake zone. And I would ask, with the concurrence of the commissioners, uh, Mr. Hewitt, if you would and your staff, will you follow up and see what all that involves? And we're not talking about mega bucks here, but just to see if that is still statutorily available to us and a projected cost? Because already this season, I've seen jet skis go under the bridge wide open. Uh, somebody's going to get hurt, and the people that are trying to load their boats in these wakes, uh, somebody's going to get hurt, there are property damage. So, uh, if you would, commissioners, anybody have opposition to that?
I think we'd all agree with you, Adam. We've been talking about it for a year. I'd like to see it happen.
All right. And, uh, the Girl Scouts echoing what the chief talked about, the Girl Scouts bicycle event. I wish all of you could have seen those little girls smiling, and there were some boys there too, but, uh, that was just an overwhelmingly exciting, positive event for everybody that was there to observe it and those that participated in it. And, uh, next year, if they do it again, please, if you have nothing else to do, I want something pleasing to look at. If they're watching these kids have a great time. Uh, and thanks again to the chief and his department and the county sheriff's department for helping out, and also the scout leaders. Recently, Commissioner Smith and our chief, police chief, and I attended the hurricane conference, the annual event. I try to attend that every, uh, three or four years, try to keep up to date on new, uh, ways to better serve our public. And also, we have an upcoming event, which I'll be attending here in Brunswick County, sponsored by the, uh, Brunswick County, uh, Emergency Department. Um, it's also time to remind everybody that hurricane season will be here before long. Be thinking about what you're needing to do to have your property prepared, and, uh, we'll do our best in behalf of the town and representing you, making you aware of what ongoing activities are and should be and so forth. So the bottom line of what I'm trying to tell you is, we are aware of our responsibility in regards to emergency situations, and we will, again, stay on top of it. This year, sure job to pray and wish and hope for no hurricanes. So we'll do our part. You guys do a good job praying to keep them away, and, uh, Mayor Pro Ten, if, uh, shares some knowledge with us.
Yes, sir. Well, I'm going to jump right in here and get, uh, make sure everybody understands my, my, my place on this. And, uh, Ms. Carroll, the reason I was smiling at you is because I have, here recently, in one of the houses close to us that's not used very often, Mr. Turner's house, I have found, you know, narcotic equipment there, so it's not just the park. It's, it seems to be anywhere they can hide.
With turkey hunting last weekend, that butler, which is in a, I mean, a wildlife area, and there were sardines on the ground.
I just, it, the chief, he'll attest to it, it's, it seems to be, uh, it's a shame that, uh, people have to, to use that to live their lives, but as far as Sailfish Park, I've been going there for sixty years. I mean, it's been part of this beach all of my life. Uh, it is a beautiful place. I hate we had to cut down one of the big trees, but it was either cut it down or it was going to fall on somebody. But, uh, as far as the park itself, it's going to, it's going to hopefully always be a park. The only problems I've ever had there with, with, with my kids, which from eight, eight twenty-three around to there, it's a pretty good walk, and a lot of times, the younger ones, I'll have them look up at me and says, "I have to use the bathroom." So it is, that is, are down there fishing. And then you have to, that's when it gets to opening corridors and hiding and that kind of stuff. Uh, and I, I understand. I, I, I can see your point. Uh, you know, when we, when we draw up a master plan, we look for the, the big bang to, to get all we can. But, uh, you know, maybe the Sailfish community could come up with some ideas that would be not so intrusive. I think, uh, Christie had a, uh, in that master plan, there was a, a waterless, uh, facility that could be used on, on that, that property or, or something of that nature. You don't want a portallet.
We don't, we don't, we don't want to provide a restroom facility to the residential neighborhood on the dead end street.
Okay. Okay, that's, again, maybe y'all can come up with some ideas of some improvements that you think that could be made, uh, that won't, uh, to cause, uh, any more issues. Uh, I have talked with staff, and they, and told me that, uh, our police department hadn't had any calls or complaints from that area. However, I've talked to Christie yesterday, and there is a, some signage being produced that will give a curfew hours for that location, and at that point, it'll be up to the, the residents to call nine-one-one because in the evenings, we don't have a person here, and nine-one-one is the way to do it, correct, chief? So it's not a bad thing, and it's, it's the way you're supposed to do it. So get, uh, you know, do that. That way, the, the, the staff here can know what to do and come down and take care of any revelers that are there past the prescribed hours. But as far as Sailfish Park, I love the place. I, I, I have to agree. I don't, wouldn't want a, a commercial, commercialization of it, however, personally with the, the times I've been there, having small kids and grandkids, a, uh, a place for them to use the restroom would help. And again, if you put a, a time limit on it and so forth, I think it would be, uh, that'd be a one, could be made a, even a better place. Again, like Alan said, we went to the hurricane conference. Uh, that was very enlightening for me, being his second-in-command as emergency manager. If something would happen to him, it, it was good to see the resources that are available out there. The chief's found quite a few things that, uh, he thought that maybe our police staff could use in the case of an emergency. Uh, we were, uh, it was, it was quite enlightening for all of us. And again, as Alan said, hurricane seas, season's coming, you know? Make sure you got all your, uh, your plans ready, and, uh, as far as the town's concerned, we've got a, an emergency management plan that has been honed to perfection over the years, and, uh, as soon as we think, uh, one's even within radar, uh, we, we already, we start with the action plan immediately. Uh, the floating docks, again, that's, uh, an issue that I've got to hand it to Mr. Evans. He's, uh, he, he's, he's gone out there and, uh, and seen some of it. He understands, and I was lucky enough to be talking with him when, uh, the Wilmington Kama officials were there, and I think, uh, think with the proper verbiage that we can make everybody happy. Uh, it's, uh, the days of the dock is in a couple of weekends. That should be a happy time for everybody. It's kind of the kickoff to the, before the Memorial Day weekend when everything's, starts getting rented and our population here quadruples. So everybody get out and enjoy it. I hope we're going to have good weather for that. And I, it's nice to have this many people here, uh, at our meetings to see what goes on. We, we really do work hard for you, and we want, uh, the people online and that are looking at us electronically to understand that we, we want to do what's right for Holden Beach, and having, uh, people come and give their comments is an important part of that, and we appreciate it. Thank you.
Mr. Murdock?
I too am glad to see everybody here, and we definitely listened to what each of you had to say. I, I had the privilege of living on Sailfish for a couple of years, so I, I know exactly what you're talking about. Um, with that being said, I'd like to, uh, ask all of you and everyone listening to keep Officer Conley in your prayers and your well wishes if you can. He's, he's coming home, and we hope to see him again real soon. Um, the Holden Beach Beautification Lady is going to take over my place in a couple weeks. I don't know the exact date, but I'm sure it's, I'm going to get a call. Um, for their plant sale. It was a big success last year, and everybody seemed to love it, so we're going to clean up our facility again and let them have it, let them have another go. So come out and support those ladies. They do a lot for the island and, and their work is literally everywhere. Spring's upon us, and it's going to get crowded, but I'm, I'm glad to see the, the weather and the, glad to see some legs and some short pants and some flip-flops, and just hope all you guys enjoy it. It's a great time of year.
Doctor?
I want to thank everybody from Congress for coming out tonight. It's good to hear your remarks. That's how we know what's going on. Um, it's good to know we got a master plan. Sometimes we don't always hear from the people that it's involving, and things get moved along and everything like that because we don't hear the input. Um, so appreciate you coming to the meetings and, and saying what you want to say, and we like to see more people, more homeowners. I want to thank the staff. Uh, they've obviously been working busy, stormwater situation. The Lockwood Folly inlet, that's definitely an emergency situation, I think. I was on the point this weekend up here off of, um, Lockwood Folly and was able to enjoy the beach out there, and the amount of, the size of the boats that are flying through there without knowing, obviously, what's going on there, it's a little frightening. I think it's going to cause some problems as the boat traffic and people start to use that inlet. Somebody's going to, there's a lot of boats that are going to get beached. It's going to be a problem. They're just, they're just flying in and out of there. Nobody's aware of what's going on. So I commend the staff on getting on this pretty quickly. Something needs to be done pretty fast. Um, I also want to thank the staff, Christie and Heather, her husband, um, and all the volunteers. I also want to thank the staff, Christie and Heather, her husband, and all the volunteers. The Easter egg hunt was a lot of fun. The weather, like I said, went from 80 degrees to 60, but we still had a good time. It was a good turnout. We had the rescue team here talking to kids about search and rescue. They had the dogs here. Lot going on, the Easter Bunny. It was a good crowd, and I think it was a great event for the town, and it was nice to see. And looking forward to days on the dock, starting the summer off, and I hope everybody comes out and supports. I want to thank Jeremy. I know looking for an officer has been like finding a needle in a haystack, and you found one, and now we're down another one, but thank God you found that one to keep you all kind of even keel. Hopefully, it'll keep getting better, and our officer will get himself back into our service. Thank you for your work. And everybody have a safe summer as it rolls in.
Judge?
Well, I don't want to beat the dead horse. Thank you all obviously for coming. And Brian, that was interesting about your legs and the flip-flops. I concur with that too. I have a great appreciation for the pure conservation in addition to the good reasons you gave about Salfish. I'm not as old as I look. I've just been around longer than most people. I'm very familiar with that. I haven't lived on it, but been around it. With that, there's always proverbial hard places and opposing tough places to deal with, and you've seen the business, but thank you for coming.
All righty. Madam Clerk, number 25.
Mr. Mayor, can I add one thing real quick, sir? I want to thank the Merchants Association for supplying our police department with AEDs for all their vehicles. That was awful kind of them to do that, to make sure in case there is an emergency, us getting older folks could have issues and have known that you've got one in every vehicle is company. I'm done. Thank you, sir.
Mr. Mayor, we were lucky to get the good reports we got this evening from staff about the money and the Lockwood Folly and the possibilities we have.
Yes, sir.
Looks like the stars might be coming together just right.
Well, since you added one, I'm going to add a quickie. Anyone here that is interested in being trained for emergency, what's a shocking thing?
AEDs.
The Holden Beach Chapel is going to be having some classes, and if you're interested in learning how to do that, being able to help your friends and neighbors and the general public in handling those kind of situations, communicate with Holden Beach Chapel, 842-64... No, 842-5700, is that it?
5700.
5700.
Do you know the date?
They're scheduling those now, so if you call over there, they'll tell you, "Need to call before 2:00 every day." That's when the church secretary is there. Denisea is her name. 842-5700. All right, Madam Clerk?
Close session pursuant to North Carolina General Statute 1433181183. Consult with the attorney.
All right, is there a motion to go into executive session?
Second.
All in favor, say aye. All right. Thank you for being here. You're welcome to wait and see when we come out. Okay, we're back into regular session.
I would like to add an item to the agenda, please. A discussion in action on approval of an ADA mediation agreement.
What?
That's correct. All right, everybody understand the motion? We need a second.
Second.
All in favor, say aye. Anyone oppose? All right, so that, we have added that to the agenda, and that's going to be agenda
25A?
25A.
All right, 25A. I'd like, we're putting the finishing touches on the agreement, and we would like to recess this until April the 20th at 5:15 PM.
Second.
5:15 or 5:25?
5:25 would be more...
April, we'd like to recess this until April the 20th at 5:25 PM.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.